We normally begin our meetings with a prayer. If you're able, I ask you to stand and ask Councilmember Richard Turner to read this prayer.
Amen to God, Almighty God, with all blessings flow. And thank you that you allowed us this rich freedom and privilege to gather tonight as citizens of this wonderful community. We pray that the business that we transfer out here tonight will be one of harmony and peace and prosperity for all of your people. We pray that you would keep us in harmony there in Christ's name. Amen.
And as you say, please call the road.
Yes.
Yeah.
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 Yeah. Yeah, Councilmember Watkins has been out, she's ill, she's recovering. I hope that she'll be back at our next meeting. So if you will keep her in your thoughts. This time, we have approved our minutes by regular scheduled meeting that was held on February twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen. Any corrections or additions to those minutes? Do not withstand this submitted to you. We are going to move on to item number five, which is petitions to be received from the public. I would, I'm going to jump down to the general public hearing before I go back to five. We have had a couple of phone calls from family members regarding the Historic Preservation Commission and the Republican House. A number of those relatives would like to be at the public hearing when we have it. It's going to be the choice of the council and the Historic Preservation Commission, if you're willing to postpone this to a future date. I know several of you signed up to speak on that, so that's why I mentioned it now. You can still come up at the public petition portion of the meeting and speak, but we are going to have a public hearing, whether we do it tonight or at some date in the future when family members can be here. So I'll just give you that heads up before we go to item number five. Petitions received from the public, it is our portion of the meeting that you can address the council. Most of you that have spoken in the past have signed up. Any comments should be directed to the council as a whole and not to individual city or staff or council members. It is your opportunity to raise a question or present a request to the council. In most cases, we're not going to respond to the public comments tonight, but we refer the matter to the city manager or staff for follow-up. If you come up, please speak from the podium in civil, non-argumentative, respectful manner. Personal attacks which have the potential to disrupt the meeting will not be tolerated and will be asked to sit down or removed from the meeting. We will monitor your time at two and a half minutes. We'll give you a heads up and limit the remarks to three minutes. So at this time, I'd like to call on Nehemiah Smith.
Good evening, Council. Colonel. Step right up, step right up and see, Rocky Mountain manufactured issues. Connor Barkers at it again. New, new issue here, Mr. Camilla's dancing as a member of the Human Relations Commission. Oh, he's not, he's not a citizen of Rocky Mountain, he's a resident. Well, I am a resident and I'm a commissioner on the Human Relations Commission. As I understand it, the member is the NAACP that designate is Mr. Dancy. Therefore, Mr. Dancy is not a member, he is a designate of the member, the member being the NAACP manufactured issue. Manufactured issue too. Oh, the city has a equipment mechanic one job for equipment mechanic one. And they are paying between sixty-five and ninety-eight, sixty-five and ninety-eight thousand a month, no? A year, no? Sixty-five and ninety-eight million dollars a year. That's the, that was the salary that was posted on, on the post by someone making up a manufactured issue. Ninety-eight million dollars is half of, almost half of the city budget. Manufactured issues. We need to truly come together. If not, isn't the time for truth? I don't know when, when we'll get to. Brother Rose, I said, and I call him Brother Rose because he referenced Matthew, the sixth chapter, I think around the twenty-third or twenty-fourth verse, "A man can't serve two masters, say he loved one and he'll hate the other." Well, you know, are you serving the master of it was all right then, but it's not okay now? Which master are you serving? Can't serve both of them? So if it was, if it wasn't right when you were doing it, then it's not right now? Or vice versa? Manufactured issues. Now all the same because monsters say so. Because monsters say that you shouldn't be the city manager and that you should go. Because monsters say so, then you are leaving. Now, have our full support. This council has my full support because you're doing a great job. Continue to do what you're doing. God bless you. Good night.
Samuel Bang.
I'm coming out today talking about the crime of Rocky Mountain, murders, there's more on in this city. We need to get some type of programs with the police department to work with the community out here. Because today was a good day because I seen three gang members today went to Clayton Home, got jobs today. They seem like they're the only people here, um, people are felonies and everything. I'm a felon too, I went to prison two times. I ain't shameless. But, um, we need to come together, black and white, however you want to put it. You know, I'm listening to them, I, um, I said county has full support. Some people know my, my situation. Because I'm still hearing, because I'm still losing people out here that I know. For many years, kids are getting murdered. Uh, mothers losing their kids. Because that's a sad feeling. People going back and forth on Facebook, talking about who done this and done that. You know? You know, it's just a lot of things in the city. I just left Wilson this weekend on my white Wilson's road. Wilson is moving faster than Rocky Mountain. People walking down the street holding hands and everything. We still, our city, we still moving so slow. I've been here forty-five years. And, and Mr. Smith said, and his thing said, um, he done more than seventy-five years in the last fifteen, twenty years. He might be right, you know? But at the end of the day, there's more crime going on in the last seventy-five years than right now. You know? You know, and I got a best friend who's running for city council, you know, he, people coming over Facebook talking about he need to pay bills and all that type of stuff. You know, what kind of stuff is this, man? I thought it's supposed to be a judgment games, you know, the best man win. I see that this stuff really can get dirty. It's just funny, man, you know, I've been with this guy for, been friends ever since I was ten years old.
You got about thirty seconds, Mr. Bang.
I know how much time we got. I've been friends with this guy for thirty, thirty years. You know, and I wish you the best of luck, best man win. I ain't no hater, but I just want this city to move forward. That means that everybody got to go up there, everybody got to go. But, um, may the best man win, that's all I can say.
Thank you. (applause). Elise Daughtry. That, Elise, Dr. Koo, and then Robert Carr and Maury Menjies.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Coming to you tonight, the petition I think that was presented to you today before the committee of the whole, I was one of the ones that did sign that, but it was some caveats involved. I do think there should be a five thousand dollar side grant with the stipulations that all property taxes must be paid and up to date, all fees must be paid and up to date. I also would prefer if the buildings were secure, which means the roof and the, and the entire envelope, because just by putting, updating the facade really does no good at all if you don't have a secure roof. And I also would prefer for this to be a rebate if you decide to go with that, as opposed to just giving five thousand dollars just to someone because they happen to own property downtown. So I hope that is taken under consideration if you do decide to consider it being five thousand dollar side grant that I think petition was presented to you. If it hasn't, I think it will be. Also would like to further talk about Ratio Design. This is a, this is a study that we, the citizens, paid for because y'all approved. August twenty-second of twenty sixteen, that was a comprehensive plan of what needs to be done downtown with the addition of the fifty million dollar event center. It was approved by y'all, but it still sits on the shelf, it still has on there draft. It, it addressed what needs to be done in downtown to make downtown successful, to make the event center successful. I think, my personal opinion is it doesn't meet the narrative either of a few of you or all of you. And so we wasted over a hundred thousand dollars for a study that you're not going to implement. And I think that's a shame. Additionally, you also had Ratio Design do a parking study. I believe the parking study is not even, I don't even know if it's a, I have, I couldn't find it. But we've gone through another parking study. How many studies do we have to go through before we decide to do something? And I think someone mentioned previously that we're moving slowly. Well, this, this was presented in twenty sixteen, it was, it was presented at the committee of the whole November twenty-seventh of twenty seventeen, and here we are in March of twenty nineteen. I think you need to pull it off the shelf, implement it. And, and by the way, where you're talking about putting housing, they talked about, and Ratio Design is a nationally known, um, organization. And where you're talking about putting housing, they were talking about putting restaurant district in there to make downtown successful. Please pull it off the shelf, please implement it, and don't waste our money.
Dr. Koo and then Robert Carr.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Koo and I live in two-two-zero South Angleton Drive. Members of the council and fellow citizens, while I'm all for holding elected officials accountable, I'm very concerned about the recent attacks by the Rocky Mountain Telegram on, on a particular group of people. What started out as seeming interest in the welfare of the city had evolved into an attack on folks of one race. It did not seem to be an accident to imply that they are only elected officials capable of more reasons. Why was the exposing not broader? I'm particularly appalled by the last March second paper, which headlined a rather venomous piece on another person of color, Mr. Dancy. While I may or may not agree with the views that of that individual, his right to state his views should be protected. Mr. Dancy is not the only person with strong opinions or use so-called objectional lang, objectionable language. If you go online and read all the comments on the Telegram website by others, unprinted opinions which they do not agree, there are a lot of name-calling and very objectionable and personal language. These people have not been singled out or even pointed out when the attack on Mr. Dancy occurred. My question is that, I am kind of concerned, is the Rocky Mountain Telegram trying to silence and intimidate us from speaking out? This country has seen an exponential increase of hate crimes starting out with this president's term. All of us, blacks, whites, and everything in between, need to put a stop to this. Only our unity can do this. I feel that the Rocky Mountain Telegram should be called up for the irresponsibility in allowing the continued fanning of racial tensions. It is my opinion that everyone, city officials, the Telegram, all of us, should be part of a unifying process. We should particularly include protecting historically marginalized communities, because it's the right thing to do, it's the correct thing to do, it's a human thing to do. Now that new investments are coming, there's an ever greater need for not allowing our people to be torn apart by increasing race, racial tensions. Thank you.
Robert Carr, Maury Menjies, and then Stacy Graham.
Take forty minutes. Let me start. I'm looking right about inside our information. (inaudible).
Pull the mic up, so some people can hear you. There you go.
Okay. Insider information. Questionable real estate deals by certain city council reported on by a local newspaper. And I personally think the newspaper does a pretty good job of digging up the facts. And what I would like to know, are there going to be any consequences of this action? Which is not a criminal action, but it's certainly unethical. And, uh, in my opinion, which is not worth a whole lot, but my opinion is the person that did these things should resign from the city council. That's not. Everybody's opinion, I'm sure, but my opinion counts for me. And that's all I have to say.
(applause). Stacy Graham and then Roger.
See, that's why I come out there, but then they come to the whole meeting, they would have kept their house.
Um, Maury Menjies, I live, um, twenty-two-twenty Northwest New Bull Park, which, who cares? Somebody told me that there was a water leak at the sports complex and they couldn't use the bathrooms this past weekend for a big tournament. And I would just like, I know, why am I asking these questions? Because y'all not going to answer. But, um, who takes care of that? And if we knew that we were having a big tournament here, wouldn't you pre-check, make sure everything is up to snuff? Somebody needs to check with whoever takes care of that. Number two, I don't mean to be rude, but when I looked up the Human Relations Committee, it said to promote understanding, respect, and harmony. Now, if that's true, and I don't do Facebook or all that other stuff, um, but in the paper, didn't I read that that Mr. Dancy talked really rude? I mean, how can he help promote harmony if he really truly believes in his heart the way he speaks? And my other question is, why would the NAACP put somebody on that committee representing them if they really don't like people of some other color, which I happen to be one of? Also, um, does the city housing, or is there a city building authority that checks rundown places? I know a couple of months ago, there was these two poor guys who were talking about their family's house that got torn down, and then they got a bill for ten thousand dollars from the city to repay the city for tearing it down. Now, you know, if they had ten thousand dollars, they'd fix a house, but I don't know whatever happened to that. But that place Ebony and Ivory on North Church Street, that thing has fallen down, and somebody needs to check into that, whoever y'all did that. And also, when I was reading this, when I was reading this thing, it says, um, "When we come to the city council meetings, y'all have already discussed some issues and decided on it." Well, how do y'all know how we feel about it? Y'all have already decided everything. So why do we even have a city council unless y'all just tell us what y'all decided? I mean, don't we get to say so? And, um, sorry?
Your time's up.
Okay. Don't litter.
Ron, so Mr. Randy Adams.
I must answer. Yes?
Yes, that's what I have to do.
Good evening, Council. My name is Stacy Graham, as usual. I'm up here talking about animal care and animal cruelty. I do want to note that, yes, there has been some movement this week with regard, actually in the last few weeks with regard to animal care. The animal control shelter has increased its hours by a half hour a day, which now brings it into an hourly state compliance. There has also been some increased cooperation between the rescues and the officials, and they are getting more animals to medical care as needed. I am, however, not encouraged by the fact that this had to happen after another party filed a state complaint. I've been talking to you for over a year regarding these matters, but it wasn't until last month, when a state complaint was filed, that some action took place. I was going to talk to you about some statistics, because Mr. Knight brought up that he appreciated hearing real statistics and real cases when another party was presenting things to the council. However, I decided to talk about finding a new chief of police. I know that many citizens want you to find somebody from within the state, within the city. However, keep in mind that those people in the higher echelons of our police department are already entrenched in the secrets that were already kept. They have already absorbed this culture, and that is a culture that simply is not acceptable. You need to be transparent. I also hope that after the last hiring process debacle, that there are going to be some qualified, interested people. And I certainly hope that in the future, when one meets with the chief of police, he doesn't simply smile at you, tell you what you want to hear in your face, and then have a lieutenant call you to tell you that he does want to see the evidence. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, too. I remember going to church and a prophet doesn't have honor in his own country, so oftentimes everything is superior on the other side when you're living in your situation. An internal audit or internal investigation is underway, and still there are calls for our city manager to resign or be fired. I recall hearing some in our community encouraging others to wait until the investigation is completed. Oftentimes mishaps happen on social media, often hear, or rather read, the comments saying, "Wait until you see the full story, there's another side to the story." There's always seeming to be a rush to judgment in our community, causing more chaos, more happening, and less unity and more division. I'm confused at how there's a bright future in Rocky Mountain, but yet our manager has to go. That makes zero sense to me and others. There are positive things happening in our community, and I asked this council to find ways on social media to highlight the growth and development in our city. Bad news travels fast. We have to work twice as hard to ensure to notify the people of all the good that's going on in our city and that is not overlooked. I want to thank this council for putting together a framework for an audit committee. I believe that there is direction also to include funding for equipment to allow these city council meetings to be broadcast live and/or edited and recorded later. Transparency in local government and having facts versus alternative facts are essential in having effective conversation in our community. As it relates to the downtown facade grants, I had an opportunity to go to the committee of whole meeting this afternoon, where you talked about the issues, made the application process simple. In fact, I heard it was a one-page application. Oftentimes we talk about growth and development not happening fast enough, but yet, then we want to put the strengths on how fast we can move growth and development by adding other things to the process. And one thing I learned in my small group communication class at East Carolina University, that if you put people together who all thinks the same, you develop something called group think, and nothing really gets accomplished. So we got to have varying opinions, diversity on our commissions, ideas, so people can hash them out and work together. That's how harmony is created, when you hear all sides at every issue. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Randy Adcox, and then Roger Bradley.
Good evening to you all, and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Two quick things, just some personal notes. I was asked to just bring up the point about the Human Relations Commission. There's been some misinformation put out, I think, to kind of clarify something that I heard earlier said. Um, you know, I don't think any particular group gets the opportunity to appoint people to the commission. That's not the way it works. And it's not the way it should work, by the way. That, that committee is set up, the way it's set up, the rules are pretty clear. I think the consensus among the public is the rules don't need to change. You do abide by the rules, enforce the rules, and carry on with the rules that are on the books already. Uh, number two, some months ago, I asked about, about where a cemetery was in a state of disrepair, certainly some had, had stone falling, cracked and broken, and I asked that something be done about that. Honestly, I have not been back over there, but someone brought it to my attention recently that there's been no change over there. They have still broken headstone and top over, and so I would like to bring that back to your attention again, to bring some attention over to about the cemetery. Uh, one personal note, you know, for three weeks in a row, I sat out here in this audience and I listened to one person come up here and speak to the group, to all the council. And I got to tell you, after last week's meeting, I left here very dejected and very disciplined, for a number of reasons. You know, and I agree with so much of what somebody said in the past. If there's ever a time for this city to come together, it's now. If there was ever a time for us to put our faith in God and let the things that are in the works play out, it's now. I agree that the investigation that's going on needs to finish. We need to, you know, hold our fire until all this is done, said, and played out. And I'm a little disappointed by those in this room and in being on this council that tend to want to divide us. It's just really frustrating to me to hear comments about darkening of the room. There's been no appreciable racial difference in this council makeup in over a dozen years now. There is no such thing as a darkening of the room. I've heard comments relating to Wilmington in eighteen ninety-eight. As a student of history, I could tell you there's absolutely zero comparison between what's going on in Rocky Mountain right now and Wilmington in eighteen ninety-eight. There is none of that.
Thirty seconds.
Maybe the fact of crisis, that would be one. Uh, thank you, Mayor. Lastly, as I said, we do need to come together. This is not a race issue for a lot of people, but I understand for a lot of people it is a race issue. We've got to get beyond that. We've got to put race aside and come to help this community, work this thing out. No one out here knows whether anything's been done illegal or MR. No one knows if anybody up here has given anything. And I tip my hat to those that are willing to stand back and wait for everything to play out and let's get the facts when I get in contact with them. Thank you.
I'm here to speak to you about your cold case, because I understand the funding today has been cut. My father served in the military, special forces, Marine Corps. My uncle was a P O W Bronze Star of the Civil War. On July seventh, nineteen ninety, my aunt was murdered and my grandmother was beaten and raped. That was twenty-nine years ago. That case is still unsolved. So when I heard that the funding had been cut for cold cases, my family asked me to come and speak. I was, I grew up in this neighborhood, I lived in this town. I understand there's sixty-five cold cases in Rocky Mountain that are unsolved. So it makes no sense to me, why would you cut funding to get people off the street? Because these men that did this to my aunt and my grandmother were still on the street. They're somewhere in this community. They could be in this room. I understand there's no chief of police. Well, you've got to have a good, strong bureaucracy to lead. And there's some good people in Rocky Mountain Police Department. But I'm here to speak about the cold cases. My dad, my uncle, and his siblings have all passed. They all went to their grave, not knowing what happened to their sister, and they're with twenty-nine years, four and a half. So when I called last year, I wondered if that number sixty-five is accurate, because when I called, I was told, "Are you sure it happened in Rocky Mountain?" "Yeah, I'm sure. I'm positive." I was on hold for forty-five minutes while they went into the computer system. They couldn't find it. Finally, somebody whipped and bounced on the city's. Finally, somebody whipped and bounced on the city's. Yes, that's still unsolved. So I'm hoping that you will take it upon yourselves to find the funding for that, to have some people dedicated to do that, because I don't want somebody to have to go through what my family's gone through for twenty-nine years, not knowing what happened, who did this to my aunt, and who did this to my grandmother. Thank you.
Warren Dottrich. And then Mr. Turner, we're gonna maybe break the mic to ease him. Mr. Mayor, Ken Collins, and fellow citizens of Rocky Mountain, Warren Dottrich, I live at one seventy-three Manchester Court. Excuse me, after witnessing and hearing recent negative council addresses, reviewing select recordings of past meetings, and after being called out for speaking about, of all things unity, many of them that said these things were pastors and reverends in our titles, I'm compelled to pose a few questions to you and to our community for consideration in response to those, and also hopefully for the greater good of our community. My questions are few. Number one, does the Lord that you proclaim to follow require you to wallow in the past, tear down your fellow man, and with condemning words, or to forgive them seventy times seven if necessary? Does the Lord you profess to follow command you to drive and come into this chamber and online to intentionally draw a wedge between two people groups, or to go out and proclaim the good news of Christ? Does the Lord you profess to worship teach you to despise other races and besmirch them with vitriol, seething vitriol, or to follow what he says is the second greatest commandment of all, which is to love others as you do yourself? As I listen to the speeches and I read the Facebook posts, I can't help but scratch my head and say, "Are we studying the same gospel? Are we thinking, speaking, and acting as followers of Christ of our own agenda?" Even our fellow citizens that have no faith at all know we can't get along slinging bars at each other. I'll be the first to admit, I have no clue what it's like to walk down the street in the shoes of a black man. I can also tell you that they also can understand what it's like to walk in mine. I can also admit there's a rift between the groups, one that I have contributed maybe in the past, but also one that I can commit to doing something about today. I have a first cousin that gave up everything in his life to go to Nakuru Kenya to be a missionary. He's making fresh water available to the villages there. A fellow griffon from the class of eighty-three dedicated his life to putting shoes on people around the world that can't afford them. Two very dear friends of mine lost their son a year and a half ago, and they've committed their lives to making the homeless lives bearable in Charlotte, North Carolina. Up until a few weeks ago, I didn't know a purpose for me. I do know now, and that's helping to heal this town, and it's helping to heal Rocky Mountain. That's gonna be my mission, it's gonna be my cause. Sorry. I intend to create a group called Love Rocky Mountain. Its guiding verse will be First Corinthians thirteen thirteen, which is, "So now faith, hope, and love abide. These three are the greatest of them is love." I'm convinced that those whose mission it is to continually divide us will eventually fade into the distance, but those who choose to work together for the good of all shall ultimately prevail. James four eleven clearly states, "We are not to speak evil against each other, our brothers." We can't heal or make progress by tearing each other down. We can only accomplish great things working together. I hope you will join me on my journey. I look forward to working with all who are willing to help, willing to learn, willing to heal, prosper together. May God bless us in our endeavors.
And then I've got three left that are all wanting to speak on Buck Leonard Historic Designation. You're still welcome to speak tonight, but you are gonna have a public hearing at some point, assuming that the council wants to postpone it because of the family numbers.
Mr. Mayor, we would request to be able to speak to address that issue in postponing. We feel that allegedly or illegally, it might not be necessary.
Okay, well, I'm gonna let Mr. Turner speak, and then you come on up. You can sit down, Mr. Turner, you don't have to stand up. But you can be one.
It is a blessing to be here. And I tell folk in my community and groups, that when I show up and when you see me, it's a blessing, because on Saturday, I will have a birthday, and it will be my eighty-sixth I'm speaking to one issue tonight, I couldn't figure out what I should say. I'm gonna speak to one issue tonight. Butch Dancy. I worked, worked with him, maybe thirty, forty years ago. And one of the things he had a problem with, that he didn't get to go to college. And I was his mentor over the years, still is when he calls on me. He formed, organized a group of young men, and it had one thing outstanding, you couldn't be a member if you were over thirty years old. Their reason was, we bumped heads with leaders in ACTP, in the community, in the church, and everybody else, because people lived in his past, and we were trying to move forward. I was the only person they let to be a member, and I was in my fifties. I know Mr. Dancy, and I wondered, and asked him over the years, how do you, not only your time, but your economic resources, how do you manage to come to Rocky Mountain, take care of all of these problems on your own?
You got about thirty seconds.
Out of your own pocket. I have traveled all over the state with him to different groups and organizations, pretty much over the country. If you can point out to me somebody more committed, he told me just this year, he was committed from an organization.
I have to cut you off, Mr. Turner, I'll give you a last finish up there.
All right, I'm gonna finish you up. Finish up, you show me somebody in this room, in this community, is more committed to fairness. He spends his all time, all time and money representing people, speaking. He not here from behind talks. That is expensive, what I'm saying. When you catch him in Rocky Mountain, he's representing somebody in Rocky Mountain that have asked him to come.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. We had three people that were here, called Buck Leonard, I think it was Julian Jones, Nathan Best, and Jonathan Hunter, so all of you want to speak, or one of you?
My name is Natalin Best, and I'm local attorney and resident at one ninety-six East Thomas Street, Rocky Mountain. And I'm also the chair of the Buck Leonard Association for Sports and Human Enrichment, which is a not-for-profit organization that is committed to the enrichment of our local youth as a way to fight against crime, which many people are talking about tonight, and to use sports as a catalyst to get youth involved in other activities. In addition, we have Ms. Rose Hunter here, who is president and CEO of the Buck Leonard Trust, and it would be our position that it is the Buck Leonard Trust that is in charge of the Walter Buck Leonard House at six oh five Atlantic Avenue. That is the legal mechanism of how the house is administered. There are designated other officers in that trust. There are no relations of Buck Leonard that are heirs of the estate of Buck Leonard, or have any responsibility or control for the Walter Buck Leonard car. This matter has already been reviewed by the Rocky Mountain Historic Preservation Commission, and has been recommended that the Buck Leonard House be approved as historic site, as a result of the fine representative that Walter Buck Leonard was of our community so many years ago, as being one of the last members of the Negro Leagues, and just a fine example for Rocky Mountain. And we would request that we go forward with the joint public hearing tonight, or even an alternative, refer this back to the Rocky Mountain Historic Preservation Commission to review the claims of these, in quotes, "family" members who seek to hold up this very needed process. Thank you.
Thank you. That is the end of our petitions from the public tonight.
I didn't need to, we signed the honor, I wanna say something.
Okay, did you sign?
Yeah, I signed petition.
No, no, not petition, did you sign all of these?
Yeah, I signed it.
Oh, oh, yeah, okay. Yeah, go ahead.
First of all, I'm gonna say I'm thankful, just that Buck Leonard was thankful to be playing baseball all those years of its life. I'm the step-grandson of Buck Leonard, so this is very personal to me, it's kind of emotional right now, so please bear with me. My mother's here, and she's kinda becking me to come tonight, and I was gonna say, in support of the Buck Leonard Historic Designation, I had to take a look at its champion, this gentleman's wife. He was born September eighth nineteen oh seven at the corner of Robert Road and Gray Street. At the age of eleven, he became the breadwinner of the family because his father passed away, and after the funeral, his mother told him that he would have to not foretake going to high school, going away to high school, but didn't have a high school in Rocky Mountain for blacks at that time, and he had to get a job, and that's what he did. He worked at a pottery mill, he worked at a shoe shine, and he worked also at the railroad station, picking up trash, and later on, he became a mechanic, put a brake, selling his own boxcars. He was a semi-pro baseball player, he played in Portsmouth, Virginia in nineteen thirty-two, and he played for the Royal Giants as well in nineteen thirty-two to nineteen thirty-three, and finally with the Homestead, greatest in nineteen thirty-four. He's the only player in the history of Negro League baseball to play for one team seventeen years straight, the longest history of tenure of any baseball player in the history of the forty-year history of the Negro Leagues. He played with another famous baseball player by the name of Josh Gibson, they were known as the Thunder Twins, greatest batting twosome they ever played in the history of baseball. He batted five hundred against major league pitching in eight games, and All-Star major league pitching in eight games, and California, the South Bay's All-Stars. He batted five hundred at the age of thirty, he batted four hundred at the age of forty, he batted a lifetime batting average of three fifty-five against Negro League players, and batted three eighty-two against major league players. He's ranked number forty-seven in the history of all baseball players that ever played in the United States, but I suspect that's probably higher. When he came back to Rocky Mountain, he gave a lot to Rocky Mountain, as he was a true officer for twelve years for the Rocky Mountain City School Assistant Year. He was a real estate agent, he built nine houses from the nine, and rounded up, vice president of the Rocky Mountain Leagues, a true officer, and also a devout Christian and made it to the Hall of Fame in nineteen seventy-two. And I feel like it's an honor, and I think we should give him this honor, and it's a book that's been written about him, about him, and several other books. I'm in the process of writing a book about him myself, and like I said, he made the Hall of Fame in nineteen seventy-two, and I want to say this last thing, the stone that the builder refused has become the headstone of the corner. Thank you.
Good evening. Mayor Collins, Honorable Rochelle D. Smallton, city manager, city clerk, city attorney, and to all the councilmen that represents everyone in the city of Rocky Mountain, North Carolina, in addition to everybody, all my city residents, brothers and sisters, one way or another, I said, "Thank you, Mayor." For a moment, to let's just impart our emphatic view of what we think about Buck Leonard, I'm gonna make it quick, quick and brief. I happen to be the neighbor that sleeps and stays right beside the Buck Leonard Homestead. And I want you to know that I have served on the board, I've worked in the community, I've known these people as a family, I've known the foundation, as a group, and a collection of people, resources, and finances, and religious views, and they've done a great job of giving back to this community, for the children, for the families. I've seen Ms. Rose how to feed hungry children. I've seen her sons, all even around before he got sick, become coaches. I've seen even the city support them. And I'm not too familiar with the opposition, as someone else may want to give it, but I'm gonna tell you right now, I've viewed everything I've seen in that family. And we welcome the fact that the city can bring this to tourism, we can bring little children, little boys and little girls, no matter what the economic status is, no matter what the financial beings may be, we can bring some life into somebody's child and continue these tour programs. If we can set up something where there's tourism, it can become international. There's nothing else on Rocky Mountain Avenue to give us but this, unless there's somebody on the border somewhere, international, somewhere in the city, can give us another vision. I welcome it, my family and I, my husband, oh, yeah, but we, we power our cellhouse, we cut her grass, her grass is a safe cover of ours. Why? Because she has her husband, she's coming home, okay? But we don't care because we love like this. We are a people, from one end of this podium to the back of this room, we are a people. But I give to you baseball this evening.
Thirty seconds.
Okay, every man, every woman, every boy, every girl, every family member, she loves us and mirror. I've got sixty signed signatures that want to petition, let's bring some growth, some life, some joy for families on Atlantic Avenue in the city of Rocky Mountain, and thank you for opening the floor for us.
Now we've got a closing part of the meeting. And we're gonna move to items since, which is a joint public hearing for the city council and the Rocky Mountain Historic Preservation Commission, relative to the local historic landmark designation of the Walter Buck Leonard House at six oh five Atlantic Avenue. And the recommended access to receive the public comment, we just had some, if there's other members of the public that would like to speak, we'll acknowledge it this time. And then the second recommendation is to adopt the ordinance. So at this time, is there any other members of the public that would like to speak on
Just thank everybody, thank everybody, Mayor, and city manager, and everybody in this place for giving us this time. My name is Link Alexander, Rocky Mountain resident, since I was actually born here. But I've come to speak on the Buck Leonard, making it a historic site here, because I actually, I'm one of the coaches for the, for the, for the league. And I grew up here, started playing baseball in nineteen eighty-six, you know, and I played all the way up to nineteen ninety, nineteen ninety-four till I joined the military. And to be honest with you, this past Saturday, what we did was, we had like little tryouts and stuff like that, and I'm here on the behalf of the kids. You know, we got some people out here that I noticed, you know, from the past, that's also that they play baseball with me and everything like that. Mr. Beller's one of them. And it's just, you know, we're, we talk about crime and different things like that, when we talk about our children nowadays, we need to give them something other than a speech and alternative, you know, and that baseball could be that alternative. For me, it kept me out of the streets, to be honest with you. We took these kids and bought them, you know, it was about twelve of us, twelve of the kids came down there, and to be honest with you, we can save one child going through, you know, the downtrodden of what could happen in neighborhoods, and hey, it's worth it. Bring them off the streets, what we did, we got them, we did a little baseball practice, things like that, and then we went to the Buck Leonard House. I played baseball. I played baseball from nineteen eighty-six to nineteen ninety-four. Didn't know who Buck Leonard was, and that's sad. In order to know where we're going, we need to know where we come from, you know, and to hear his story, you know, we had every, all colors, black, white, they would sit down with the kids, reading, you know, they'd ask snacks, all different types of things, they were genuinely interested on, hey, well, who's this man from our city that did all these great things, you know, and it was just a joy to just to be a part of it. And I started coaching last year with the league, you know, with Jeff, good friend of mine, you know, Ms. Hunter, they brought me in, treated me as family, all types of things, and we had meetings, bi-weekly, you know, to try to do things, like you're talking about helping out the community and doing different things, to get these kids off the streets, sports is that kind of, that can bring, it ain't just basketball, it ain't just football, it's also baseball, and I think that's gotten lost in it, because I mean, I mean, um...
You got it, I turned it back.
Yes, sir. I, I played, you know, so many years, but not knowing that what type of guy Buck Leonard, all he did, you know, after that, I went to the military and everything like that, but not knowing who he was is, is like a disservice to somebody who loved the sport of baseball. So, I mean, if, if we want to try to reach these kids, you know, different things like, you know, baseball, the different things that they're trying to bring to the community, we need to definitely keep that as a historic site and honor, you know, that memory of a, of a great man, because he wasn't a man that was, that was doing all types of craziness out there, he was just a great man.
Thank you. Anybody from the Historic Preservation, did anybody want to say anything?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name's Mike Latham, I'm chair of the Historic Preservation Commission. I would like to, you already know this, but for the interests of our audience, the motion to make Buck Leonard Home a landmark, unanimously through the commission, we're all in favor of it, and is obviously one of the greatest people to ever come out of Rocky Mountain, and also what we did when we came back, his greatness also, and this was pointed out, forty-seventh of the top one hundred baseball players of all time, regardless of whichever league, that makes him one of the greatest ballplayers, period. So, we're still in favor of certifying how it proceeds, goes forth procedurally, whether it needs to be referred back to us if it's suggested, or in the interests of others that want to be present to see the man honored, I would leave that to y'all's purview, but we're steadfast in our support for designating the historic landmark.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this matter? If not, the public hearing portion is closed, and I entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'm moved that we adopt the ordinance as recommended and support designation of that home as a historic landmark for the great man that...
Aho. That a motion, my councilmember Blackwell, second, my councilmember Turner, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Item six is approved. We're gonna move on now to item number seven, this is the consideration of our minutes and recommendations from a regular scheduled planning board meeting that was held on February twelfth, two thousand nineteen. Is there any, the recommended action is to not receive a planning board minutes. Any motion? So moved. Motion by councilmember Rogers, second, by councilmember Turner, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. Item seven is approved. Item eight is a consideration, this is an ordinance ordering the community to factor to go ahead and proceed with demolition of seven or eight branch street, this was conferred from February the twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen meeting. So, the recommended action now is to adopt the ordinance. Do you hear a motion?
So moved.
Motion by councilmember Turner, second, by councilmember Knight, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item eight is approved. Item nine is a consideration of fiscal year two thousand eighteen, nineteen budget ordinance, this is for some care and board and sewer fund, and appropriates appropriations for designing improvements of each branch and outfall, the recommended action is to adopt the ordinance. Motion by councilmember Miller, second by councilmember Bullock, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. Item nine is approved. Item ten is a consideration, this is an amendment to our fiscal year two thousand nineteen C D B G project ordinance, this is for housing repair grant, transfer of the appropriated funds and the general account to the Community and Business Development Fund for our city's housing repair grant, the recommended action is to adopt the ordinance. Any motion? So moved. Councilmember Blackwell, second, my councilmember Bullock, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. Item ten is approved. Item eleven is a consideration for one new taxi rights, this is for Denise Hunter, the recommended action is to approve the new taxi rights license as recommended and authorize the city clerk to execute the same on behalf of the city.
Aho.
Motion by councilmember Knight, second by councilmember Turner, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item twelve is a consideration of two thousand nineteen new general schedule, this is for municipal record retention and disposition, this is published by the North Carolina Department of Cultural Resources, municipalities will continue to follow the two thousand twelve schedule with amendments for the program records, and the recommended action is to approve the schedule, authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the approval document on behalf of the city.
So moved.
Motion by councilmember Miller, second by councilmember Turner, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. Item twelve is approved. Item thirteen is a consideration of resolution authorizing the filing of an application for approval of an installment financing contract, this is relative to the financing for roof repairs at the senior citizen center, the judicial center, the fire station improvements, and the main one is the gas main project, estimated total is two point eight, one eight million dollars, and recommended action is to adopt the resolution.
So moved.
Motion by councilmember Knight, second by councilmember Blackwell, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. Item thirteen is approved. Item fourteen is a consideration for CSX mainland utility relocation, this is the water and sewer lines, it's a reimbursement, reimbursement agreement with the North Carolina NCDOT, this is for expenses incurred with CSX utility improvements and relocation, provides the city to be reimbursed one hundred percent of necessary construction costs of the adjustment and relocation of the water and sewer infrastructure, it's around nine hundred thousand dollars, and there's a ten percent contingency. The second item there is the bid awarded to Edward Brassman and Sons Incorporated, and there's a cost there that you can see, and then C is fiscal year two thousand eighteen, nineteen budget ordinance amendment that appropriates the funds for the project, the recommended action is to, one, approve the agreement with the NCDOT, authorize the mayor and the city clerk to execute the agreement on behalf of the city, award the bid as recommended, authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the bid contract on behalf of the city, and four, adopt the budget ordinance.
So moved.
Motion by councilmember Blackwell, second by councilmember Knight, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. Item fourteen is approved. Item fifteen is a consideration of the following architectural services and contract bids to be awarded to Oakley Collier. A is for the Tar River Transit Transfer Station renovations, and item B is for the city hall first and second floor renovations. Phase one is a space, this is assessment conceptual design for, for access, management, security. The second phase includes construction documents, bidding services, and contract administration for renovations. The recommended action is to award the bids as recommended and authorize the mayor and the city clerk to execute the bid contracts on behalf of the city.
So moved.
Motion by councilmember Turner, second by councilmember Knight, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. Item fifteen is approved. Item sixteen is a consideration of the bid, this is for a one twelve-yard truck mounted combination sewer cleaner, this is based on a award from Source Well Contract, formerly National Joint Powers Alliance, and awarded to Jet Bank Company. The recommended action is to award the bid as recommended, and two, authorize the purchasing division to issue purchase warrant in accordance with the council's award. Motion by councilmember Bullock, second by councilmember Turner, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. We have two other items that we're gonna, yeah, I think, I'm gonna call the city manager for two items.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of council, we have a recommendation to award purchase of some police vehicles, clients for this purchase have been requested and approved both in two thousand nineteen CIP projects, and I would recommend approval.
Aho. Second.
We have a motion, second, for the purchase of police vehicles, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. That item is approved, and we will again recognize the manager.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to invite our Parks and Recreation Director, Mr. Elton Daniels, to the podium here. Elton was appointed the Parks and Recreation Director last month, he's been on the job several weeks now, and he has extensive administrative experience in Parks and Recreation and other general administrative offices and duties of local government management. So, Elton, if you would like to make a few comments, we certainly will.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council, thank you, Ms. Smallton, I was honored to build this like that. Excuse me, sorry. I mean, it's an honor and a privilege to serve the city of Rocky Mountain, I look forward to working with the council, staff, management, and the community as a whole. Thank you.
And secondly, it certainly is my pleasure to announce that I have appointed the next police chief for the city of Rocky Mountain, so I would ask Chief, now Chief, George Robinson, if he would come forward. Chief Robinson is a twenty-seven-year veteran with the police department, he has worked in just about every capacity of the department, he brings extensive knowledge of the community. I think that he has a great rapport with the rank and file in the police department, and he has certainly distinguished himself in this community as a leader. So with that, it is certainly my pleasure and my honor to appoint him as Rocky Mountain's
Would you like to make some comments?
Yes, I'll make a couple, Mayor, thank you. First of all, I'd give thanks to God for this opportunity, this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, and I've dreamed of it for many years. Thanks to my family, my wife Lisa, who's been with me during the last twenty-eight years, supporting me through these many sleepless nights, you know, to be called out, we missed a lot of family time and Christmases together. To the community, to the mayor, council, city manager, I'm doing service to the community honorably, and make sure everyone's constitutional rights are protected. I come from a long history of law enforcement, my father served thirty years, I have a brother and sister that are with the family, used to run together, they have over thirty-five years, I have brothers with State Highway Patrol, he serves on Gunner's Detail, he may be here tonight. To my command staff, Captain Michael Paul, Captain Marty Clay, Captain Mike Reddick, internal commander Don Moe, for the last two months, they have been strong supporters of me as we went through these first two months. To the men and women of the Rocky Mountain Police Department, I know that you work hard, I see it every day, continue to do so, not only because that you're honorable men and women, because you really care about this community. Also to the men and women of Rocky Mountain Police Department, there's a lot of hard work and sleepless nights, it will be many times missful, thank you, but I know that you have what it takes to be successful. To the community, now's the time to build those partnerships that we create in the banks, to build on, to create new partnerships as we go forward. Now's not the time to look back, there's enough of our, of our mistakes, move forward toward improving the quality of life for this community. Listen, tonight, March of the 19th, would be the time to decide to do it, only then it would be safe to make this community a safe place. Thank you.
That is all that we have, the city council moves to go into a closing session for personnel issue, at this time, I entertain a motion. Motion and second, all in favor, say aye. Thank you all for being here tonight.